I'm now being started in the property and zoning committee, which is myself, Mr. Washington, Ms. Lee Rubin, Ms. Lizzy Felton. First thing on the agenda is to hear from the administration regarding the current status of the guest house motel located on North McCarthy Drive. We have someone from the administration.
Mr. Councilman, we, with regard to it, it is under a raise order that was issued on or around November of 2023. And it will be in court shortly. It's being handled in the city court in Alexandria. So matters before the court, we would not want to go into so we don't run the risk of waiving or placing anything privileged at issue here at the council since there's going to be matter in court. I was briefed last week when you placed this on the agenda and that's, I'm giving you my report based on my review with the chief and his team, they're here in the audience as well. So if there are specific things that any of you would want to know that our privileged matters will address that one-on-one. Obviously, we don't want to place anything at issue by talking about it, but in the interest of balance and not against public disclosure, let me give you a few facts that I think you want to know about. Whether it would be in court or not, it is, there are several investigations involved and under the public records law, any of you would be entitled, including anybody in the public, to the initial, it's called the initial report. So there are arsons involved and let me say very carefully and very clearly, no arson or report associated with this has suggested anything to do with the groups of people involved in owning or anything else. There's no evidence, we've said that, put that out. I understand that people always want to guess and say things, so just, that's, that's not the case. There are, in an investigation, obviously, things that you have to let the investigation finish or you sort of telegraph into, to others. We will say that there have been a few fires there, but if you were to remove the arson issue completely, and we do feel confident saying that there's arson if involved, if you were to remove that issue completely from the discussion, it wouldn't change the fact that the building was already declared to be uninhabitable based on not having public water connected and other things. You have to have water for lots of reasons, right? It's a minimal requirement for commercial structures, but just common sense, you have to have it for any kind of sprinkler systems and other things that would be in some way, at least in some way related to preventing fires, et cetera. So the building's in bad shape and we're going to continue to look for ways to always help our commercial folks with, when they have problems. But the mandate of the council, and I want to be clear that this is a universal mandate. This is not about singling any business out, but there's a universal mandate from this body. There certainly is from the matter of policy within the city, Safe Alex and others, all declared, adopted by the council and adopted by the administration, to push, to start getting structures that are unsafe out of the way so that structures that are new and better served people can be there. At the same time, there's always a balance. We complain to you guys, if you push us to get rid of things and then someone comes and asks for extension after extension after extension, this is a constant ebb and flow with us, nobody's criticizing, it's just something we all go through. But the bottom line is, at this point, the, the history of that structure would be that it does not have the ability to be connected at this point without a lot of serious work. And it is under, as of today, a raise order. And we'll let the chief come up and make any other clarification. He's got his team here, they can talk to you about any other issues you may have.
So again, my name is Sam Allen of the chief of the Alexandria Fire Department.
Chief, I know that the fire there a year or so ago, there was some demolition done after that fire, is that?
No, sir, listen.
There was never any, any demolition done?
There was not a fire a year ago.
For the what?
We've, we've only responded to three fires in 10 years.
Okay, well, not timing, not timing maybe. Is there part of the building that's uninhabitable previous to this recent fire?
Can you?
Uninhabitable, fire, fire damage.
So the building that's involved in fire is not inhabitable?
For reasons other than, other than the fire itself?
That's correct.
Okay, so my question was, are there other parts of the building that were uninhabitable because of previous fire damage?
Okay, so, so that's what we needs to develop in court, I mean, what is the, what's the basis for the distinction?
I don't know if there is, I'm just, I'm just curious if anything had ever been done on the building after any previous fires? That's all, it's just my curiosity.
Well, I think that one of the issues has been that there's an assumption that a lot of the, that these fires have been more than there were and in a different timeframe than they were. So in 10 years, three, right?
That's correct.
And what's the history, so? When was the last one?
Last one was January 29th this year.
And there's an initial incident report available for that?
Yes, there is.
So we probably, we can make that available, it's available to the public and it's available to the council to read the report. Just want you to be careful in the investigation of making those distinctions. Look, I, I haven't seen anything, I'm not a social media person that's going to follow a lot, but I know from staff and others that there's a lot of talk that, you know, if you ask me personally, I think it's reckless and nonsense and people ought to not do it. But the fact of the matter is that I'm a sentiment state, so again, I want to be careful that there is no allegation we're making or saying about anything to do with this other than some real basic stuff. I mean, I can, I'm not done today, but there could, you could understand that people looking for shelter can go into buildings and catch them on fire. There can be other things in investigation that will uncover all kinds of things, but we're not suggesting, we're prepared to give the answer to that. We're not suggesting that it's not separate from the raise issue in city court. What we're telling you is, as of today, that building is unfit for any kind of commercial use and
That's each of the buildings?
Each of them. And under the normal rules that we would follow, there's a raise order in place. And unless there was a petition to change that, I think it's going to proceed in due course as any case would in city court. I think there probably have been requests to try to uncouple parts or do things, but our, we're bound by the law and I would cite, for example, in the sanitary code, any building or structure intended for human habitation, occupancy, use of employment has to be provided, has to provide adequate safe and potable water through a supply, through a safe system to piping and all fixtures, appliances and appliances. And I don't get too much into it. Chief, would you certify today that it cannot do that?
That is correct. Any building cannot do that.
So, thank you for that, chief, and that was going to be one of my questions. So now right to the answer, it's not fit for commercial business. One of the other reasons I had this put on the agenda was, I've been getting calls, emails, and I have visited some of the business owners in that area. And one of the, one of their biggest concerns is there's been a lot of break-ins in businesses over there and it seems to be stemming from that location. And one of the concerns has been, are we looking to tear it down? What, what stage is all we in that for condemnation and going after the property owner? And that was some more what we wanted to know more about today. Has there been something on record for that? And there's actually some local business owners that want to speak on what's been going on because of the people inhabited in that area.
Councilman, I would just say that the report that we're giving is, as much as we would say today, given that this is pending court case and more than one, at least one joint, but more than one part to an open investigation. But we would certainly listen to any of the public about those concerns and it would be obviously considered in it. Unlike a normal situation where you just have a building that was on the list, so to speak, for condemnation and we went through the normal process, this one unfortunately has been involved in these several incidents that take it out of what I would call the norm. And so that's why we're being careful, we don't want to prejudice ourselves by anything we have to do in court. And I think if the overall universal philosophy here is to try to remove these structures, the better part of discretion would be to do what we're saying and not go into that part. Having said that, we will, like you, stand by and listen to what any citizen has to say about their concern, which certainly could be very relevant to Carl.
All right, but I do know we have Mr. Patel. Some of the previous side conventions here, if you want to come up and speak and let us know. I know you came a long way.
Hi, my name is Barbara Hayes, I'm the general manager of the four points by Alexandria right next door to the ACC. And this is Mr. Patel, owner of both establishments. And Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your opening and being very cautious about what we're doing with the court case and I appreciate that. But something you had mentioned about working alongside the businesses while we're doing due justice and making sure we're honoring that. And what we're seeing on both properties is a large number of people who are, let's call it vagrants, let's talk about, you know, homeless. We can describe them in many different ways. So they're in those buildings and, you know, we talked about it not being fit for commercial use or residential use, but we know a large number of people who are taking shelter there. So that's endangerment number one. Number two is they are coming to both of our properties, the ACC. We have broken windows, people are trying to get in. Obviously, we had some extreme weather that they couldn't get from the existing structure, the shelter, because of the cold temperatures and the lack of water. That's the one thing that we have coming into the hotel. They're coming to look for water, they're coming into our public bathrooms, they're trying to get into our rooms. We constantly have to have security guards walking around our hotel because if a guest goes out one of our many sides doors and just catches that door, we now have them in our hotel. They like to hide behind our ice machines, they like to hide behind our closet doors. Our extreme measures that we have to put into our everyday process of our housekeepers making sure they have a buddy because if they get into the hotel, there is literally a million places that they can hide and then encounter a guest, encounter all of our employees as well. This has become a huge operation issue for us and causing us expenses. Not to mention the oppression of the hotel and the ACC of having these people in our area, making us unsecure. And that's going to be a loss of tax dollars because we're losing room revenue permits. We're losing business over at the ACC. And I can get guest surveys, I can get some documentation to show you that. So what you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, which I was very glad to hear, while we're not talking about long-term plans because the courts have to do it, but what can we do for the businesses right now? Can we have more patrol people there? Can we make sure that people aren't living there? Are we having some sort of even community-wide event that we can volunteer for to make sure that these people are not seeking refuge there to be able to go in the other ways? So our ask today is to talk about a timeline and talk about some solutions, what we can do while we're having to wait for the court cases.
Thank you for that. One of the things I wrote down, maybe, Mayor, I know we're stretched thin, but can you maybe look at having, you know, a regular patrol coming by more regularly in that area? I do know, as I said, a couple of businesses right there have been vandalized, including the hotel. I've had several calls and have been out there and have watched several videos of different business owners that have cameras of people coming and you see them crossing the ditch, going into the hotel area back there, standing there and coming out the ditch. There's been cars stolen right in there. There's another business that's, they've lost over 20,000 in this year that of things being stolen and the cameras catch them coming from right there at that property. And we will fall, is there something that we can do on, add police presence to, patrol a little extra through there?
We'll be happy to address those kinds of plans in due course. I mean, the item on the agenda tonight is addressing the raise order at a building and we've given you a full report. There is a lot of police presence in the area. We have a homelessness situation in the city that is not unique to this area, as a matter of fact, at all. It is a problem on that quarter drive, it's a problem people even just crossing it in dangerous ways. It's a problem on a lot of major intersections, there are traffic issues it causes, there are dangerous situations it creates with getting on interstate interchangeings. And so it's a, it's a very large issue. I would tell folks in business that with Safe Alex, I would definitely tell you to contact Charles Frederick Smith and his team about those things so that they can help monitor. But, you know, in a business, especially in any area where there, where there are maybe perhaps more homeless than others, there is going to be a need for security. And there is no way this city or any other can provide a private person the use of the police force that would be any different than we have to provide everywhere, that wouldn't be fair either. So it is a part of the cost of business to have to absolutely think about security. Having said that, I don't want to mix up either that we shouldn't be too quick to assume that all homeless folks are, I think the word was used earlier, vagrants or any other thing like that. There are people who experience homelessness in a way that have different needs than others. And so I would tell you, Mr. Washington, that there are unfortunate, a lot of folks that I wouldn't classify as truly homeless and that are engaged in everything from on the very far end of the spectrum, organized illicit behavior to take advantage of theft and other things in a, in a commercial area. And then there's folks on the other side who have, you know, health problems and everything else. So we're aware that that problem is there, but there are other several remedies and things that have to go beyond just thinking that the city can cure that issue. There are lots of problems, including the way we address homelessness in the city, which we've talked about now for the better part of a year. We need to address the idea that unfortunately, and this offends some people, that you stop at an interchange and you give someone money and you may be giving someone money who in fact is part of an, is, is not, it doesn't help. And I think there's a larger, I understand maybe the homeless coalition recently opened a GoFundMe page. And I wish that we could all talk about what best practices are to help the homeless because what I personally see is a lot of practices that I would not classify in the best practice arena of theirs. So I would first encourage you to talk to Safe Alex and just understand that saying the words, just adding patrols, the city all has to be patrolled, it's, it's fully manned now, but you got everybody in a corridor is going to have a place where they would like to see extra officers. And we are having a lot of trouble getting and maintaining officers. We have a situation with recruitment and retention. So you know, with 10 new applicants and we have lost half of them for any, for no other reason than going through the cabinet, said, this isn't for me. And that is a national, that's a, but what people want to do about joining forces is very different. So we're going to continue to have lots of struggles that need to be, I guess, a more holistic approach. I, I just don't want to give the lip, lip service everyone does and say adding a patrol is going to do it because that's not true.
Now, and I agree, and to your point, I want to clarify a little bit. I wasn't asking for our certain business to receive any more controls or anything else. I'm talking about the actual source. Because if we go to the source and patrol just the guest house, that way we're not doing other businesses or anything else because we know that they're there. Constant presence there is going to keep people from going back. So, you know, the fact that no one's going at all, I don't, we call the police and they have a very quick response time. They deal very quickly with the people that we're dealing with and wherever their source is coming from. So we don't have a problem with the response time when we call them. What I'm talking about is a more presence at the actual guest house. Independent of any property or business, if you keep them from coming back and you make it not easy for them to be there, then they're not going to stop coming there. So that was my more focus, yes, private security, we've done our measures 100% and we're going to continue doing that. But I want to go back just one more step because in the opening, and I may have heard incorrectly, so apologize. But I think when we're talking about the property, you said we're going to work with our area companies. And that's exactly what we're doing right now. We'll be part of the solution, which is, it's bigger than our two properties. And so we need to come together to make sure, and I will add another level. It is unsafe for anyone to be there in the condition that it's at. So if somebody is sleeping there, whatever their situation is, they are being exposed to lots of elements, crime and everything else. So just as a good citizen, we shouldn't want people in that situation for their own health and their own safety. So I, my goal was to have it all on the guest house, not special treatment for our two properties. And if I wasn't clear with that, then I apologize.
I have a thought and a question. You mentioned, you know, you are doing extra private security on your property. And I'm, I'm very unfamiliar with this property, with the owner, anything about it. So my question is just to try to understand a little better. So that they get property that is damaged, unsafe, all of this, at what point does it fall to the property owner to secure it? And to have, maybe they have put private patrols to keep that area safe? Is that what's going to happen in court?
So that, that's what I was more alluding to. I'm not sure, I think sometimes people speak at cross purpose, they don't mean to. I, I just want to make sure that we clarify things. The, the statement that you would, to secure the property that's causing the problem, again, it's the same issue. It would be a very poor use of the resources of the city to station police officers at that property. While that might absolutely stop people from going into it, it would also affect the rest of the city in a drastic way in terms of use of resources. Because it truly isn't the city that did this, caused it or is doing it. The city has to be a resource provider. It has to work with the private sector, those in business to take control with city assistance, and that's what Safe Alex is all about doing. Creating those compacts in the area where private business can pool resources and do exactly what you're saying. One of the things that we'll be launching and trotting out this year is exactly that. So there is a corridor in your district, I might add, because we're going to pilot some things there that will follow right along these lines. And certainly that corridor needs a lot of help, particularly right in that area. But we want to make sure people understand that it isn't the accusation someone's trying to get for their own private business, the officers there. It's that any use of resources that stems that one problem, where you're manning an area, is always going to be a tax, if you will, a takeaway from all areas. And so police do tend to be responsive in terms of reactive. When you have a full force, when everything's working right, when community police is fully up and you have enough people where you can do more, what we would call proactive work, doing things ahead of time, it's easier to do it. But I just don't want to make anyone believe that there are going to be officers that can camp out at the guest house to stop homeless people from going in. The patrol will be there, I've seen the chief in the audience, he's nodding, we're going to make sure. I think the better solution to things like that is when we have a serious threat to public safety is, as we were just told by Ms. Felton, we've got to hurry up and knock those things down, which rather circuitously brings me to my first act. If people can always come in and get an extension at this body, that isn't going to happen. And so when we see ones that are clear, like this one with this history, we go to court and we remove the problem, if you will, at its source, which is the building itself. But I, I still think we're going to have and continue to have the need for lots more commercial joining with our city folks in the solution. It is a together solution, it's a holistic solution. The police, the police can't correct alone. They don't have the manpower and even if they did, they wouldn't be equipped to do all of the other social things that go with this. We have a homelessness problem here, like other cities, but what I'm saying is we're not doing the best practices that we should be doing to help all of these partners. And in fact, we're incentivizing some bad practices. And people are going to have to say that, it's going to be hard to say out loud, it's going to hurt feelings. And there are lots of folks in this audience who may hear me say that and say, is he being catalyst, what does he mean? I mean the opposite. I don't want to be biblical about it, but there, there are things that you can do to help people get better where you'll have a lot longer lasting solution. And I think we're doing some of that wrong. And so I can't tell any of you not to give someone money or food at the roadside. And I wouldn't pretend I could or try to. I can only tell you that some of the folks you're giving to are, are not what you think. They're part of a system and they're being exploited, by the way, they're being exploited, trapped. And sometimes even if it is purely innocent, you're giving to someone and it didn't help them if you're giving cash. And we've got to address that as a community. And so to the extent we're off that property, which is, I thought we were talking about, we're on this larger social problem, I'll use it as a platform and say we've got to come up with some better policies. And that's going to take the people in the homelessness business to also think about how and the ways in which we're servicing people or serving people in Alexandria.
So, and I just want to echo that, I just want to make sure, my intent was never to say we want police presence 24/7. I, that was completely, I, something I would never even expect, even for my own safety living in Alexandria. However, just stopping by is going to show a pattern that they can't stay there. Does that make sense? I'm talking two times a shift, maybe a couple of times a day, maybe something as a drive-by, just go in, make sure people know this is not inhabitable and go away. So I'm not looking for police presence, there's no way, we have a staff there, we will make you aware of that and everything else. And I agree 100%. I'm from Washington DC and most recently from Monroe. So I understand the homeless problem and I agree with the mayor 100%. We're kind of adding to the solution by doing these things. And there's lots of things that we can work together as a community. And I hope that as volunteering, we can do that and make that happen. Even just posting signs at the most places that people are getting those, please give to the GoFund at the homeless and that way they can use our resources and do the things. So I'm not aware, I understand this is a huge problem. I'm just saying our businesses are hurting, we are literally losing clients and that is losing tax dollars. And I just wanted to put a number with that, we have the stolen property. I too cannot retain employees because they're scared. They literally encounter people in our rooms when they're going to clean our guest rooms. So I just wanted to leave that with a more personal thing. I'm not asking for a setup right there. But if we make it a common practice to drive through that parking lot and let them know this is not a place, I do believe it's going to change. And I don't think it's, it's proper for me to go on someone else's property to do this. We would have to have the full backing of the city. It's not my property, I can't go on there, I shouldn't be going on there. This is why we need our help.
And I think connecting with the Safe Alex apartment, they are very good at what they do. And I think they can offer a lot of help. So if I can, I can even get this on the radar.
Thank you so much, I do appreciate that very much.
What's the address of?
We are, where's the address of that?
2020, 2022, uh, 2020, 25.
Yes.
The property on the agenda is 2211 North McCarthy.
2211, okay.
Thank you all for your time, we do appreciate it.
So we'll look at the volume two of calls, but I just want to make sure you guys understand it. Again, I know we all, the folks that go and at the times they go and things, they don't, they're not dissuaded by seeing a police car in the area and the fires and the other things. I mean, we've got a bigger issue, we have to deal with, which is part of that investigation.
We, we cannot go in the property.
Yeah, I'm not saying, yeah.
We can't, we cannot go and take, just from the legal office.
And I didn't take it that she was saying that they should do it. What I mean is, I think that there's a model of pooling of resources with private businesses being affected that partner with the stuff can help dissuade that. And certainly one of them is, if you have recalcitrant ownership that will not correct a problem, there are some things in the law that no one uses that allow several remedies to some of this that a lot of cities are starting to see happen. I hate to use the term, they call some of it because we, we only think of it for gangsters and in the wrong way, but there are statutory schemes that allow you to clean up some of this and put it on owners that aren't doing things. Not saying that's the case here, but it is the case in elsewhere in the city, we should be using those.
So, and you alluded to that, which it seems to be in that area that it's known that the property owner isn't taking care of things, but I know since we have legal
You're saying that.
What I said, and the neighborhood has said, and it appears to have Well, I've seen, and the neighborhood has said, and it appears to us that it's the property owner not taking care of the property, and that's the reason, if I have, if I have people living in my backyard where I live at, I believe that that's on me, and if, if the business owner then has somebody living in the back of their business and they don't stay there, I believe that that is on them. So, and in that, that I sent in, I did ask about informal complaints related to this property, but for the people who may have missed that part, we can't really discuss that because of legal matters that are going on in city court. So, that's pretty much it, there's no one else that wants to speak on this matter.
And I'm just, Mr. Washington, we don't have an understanding, someone is being allowed to live there. Not to our knowledge, if we see anybody living in there.
In the back of that property?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I've seen people, it appears they're living over there, when you see them there almost every day, and, now, this was right before the fire, so, and other business owners in that area that aren't here tonight, I've seen on their videos, like I said, when they're getting vandalized, they're going back to the hotel, going right here.
I'm going to take one more minute to use this as a great opportunity to educate folks on Safe Alex and how they do it. So, a lot of times in social media, you'll see in a thread, someone complain about something that's an emergency, like, this ought to happen over here, and to some people, looking at that, the person that should come to your mind is, how's that going to fix it? You just said it on Facebook, you call the police, or you do whatever, and so I would say, one of the things that would work well here is, hearing this here, some of this, is, there's a better way to do it, and the better way to do it is, if there's specific intel you have, let's get it, and, and let's put that in part, that investigative side, and if there is, and then there's also programming with these lovely folks who I've known a long time, that they plug into Safe Alex and can get some, some better help they need, but I know we're all consumed with social media, but it doesn't solve the problem, it allows someone to say, and it may get some attention, but here, what we really need is to get down into the weeds and the data of what's happening over there and try to get that solved. So, I hope everybody will use that as an opportunity. I'd like to see them interface with Safe Alex, and I think that they're going to get a lot better response from Charles's team watching out than, than just what we're able to do in this chamber.
Okay, great. So, we got a solution. Again, to us, a little bit, take that. Does anybody else want to speak on this matter, or we have anything else in this committee? Anybody else? The committee is adjourned.